Just make a motion of adjournment before that. I'd like to call this August the 18th meeting of the Kent County Commissioners' order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to liberty and justice for all.
And for a moment of silence tonight, I understand there was an accident on Route 20 and 21, where you turn to go to Tolchester. Two helicopters were brought in to transport the people to... I didn't have peas. Thank you. 239-8359, and you enter the conference ID 885-869-293... We are going to have a public forum. It's our first item of business, so I do appearance. This meeting is being held virtually by the way of teleconference and feelable on the county website at www.kentcounty.com/government. And that is, you can use that number that I just gave you to call in to express their views to the county commissioners during the public comment period. Comments will be limited to three minutes in length. Comments longer than three minutes will be required to be submitted in writing. The Board President will open the meeting to public comments in civil manner. The Board respects your desire and right to convey your message freely. We ask as a courtesy to the Board and our citizens that you respect the Commissioner's request to refrain from naming citizens and name-calling when offering any to call in, and will ask the caller to unmute their phone, allowing them to comment. Our first public forum, Bill Mackey, our Director of Planning, Housing, and Zoning, and this is on for the comprehensive rezoning.
For allowing the planning department to hold this public forum tonight during your meeting. The focus of the forum is to hear how people would like to give and receive communication during the comprehensive rezoning process. Tonight, there are no plans to review or documents to edit. That part hasn't started yet on the county's land use ordinance. And the conversation doesn't end tonight. The planning team is available to talk with callers by phone in our office phone number, or you can email us at compzone@kentgov.org. If you Google Kent County, Maryland, comprehensive rezoning, where are we in the rezoning process? So I'd like to give a brief overview to start out with. This July, every property owner in the county received a form in their tax bill that they can use to request a change to the text in the land use ordinance and/or a change to the zoning of their property. This year, and I want to say that the idea of the text changes is really for anyone who has ever said, "I wish our zoning code said this or that," or "I wish our zoning code didn't say this or that." You can also use the form posted online to make any suggestions that you'd like to see, and your suggestions are inclined to share their ideas. Thank you for being part of our opening forum, and thank you for your participation in the process. And now, I'd like to turn the proverbial microphone over to our callers. As I look up, I don't see a lot of callers, so with your permission, Mr. President, we may not need to have the three-minute limit listening, so... Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Okay, so the first caller we have, last four digits are 0422. If you hit *6 on your phone, you'll be able to unmute 0422.
0422. Sally, let's go on to the next one, and we'll come back.
So the next one is 2348. Last four digits are 2348.
If you have the land use ordinance, to make it in sync with the comp plan is a very important process.
30475 River Road in Millington.
Caller 0422. We have somebody speaking right now. Can you hold just a moment?
We'll come back to you as soon as this caller is finished.
Ms. Langrefielder, you may continue.
All right, thank you. And again, this is a very important process, and it requires as much... I can barely hear the person who's calling out the phone numbers, yet I can hear the Commissioner quite clearly. But we're working, we're calling in, or we're watching this on the Internet, and this is just not conducive to any real dialogue or sharing of ideas. Poor phone connections, and we get dropped, and yet we can't... And I put it here very well earlier. So I think that future hearings should be in-person, where citizens can discuss these important matters and work together and review suggestions and develop... Not in-person talking to you, or you talking to us, and there's some back and forth. All we're doing is calling in, making a statement, and we don't know what, where it goes from there, particularly if we have something important as far as the text amendment or a rezoning issue. So I strongly person meetings. Since this is not emergency legislation, I don't know why we can't wait a few months to make sure this is done right. Maybe we could have it at the high school in the auditorium and have people sitting far apart, and wearing masks, of course, because you're just over the phone or watching you on TV. So that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally, go back to the other caller.
The first caller was 0422. If you hit *6...
234, can you hear me?
Yes.
234, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Frank Lewis. I live at 30475 River Road in Millington. And my comment is that the current technology, which the Board utilizes for monitor for significant back and forth, the video is quite small. It's very hard to see the Commissioners. They're about an eighth of an inch in size on the screen. And in order to have adequate input with the COVID epidemic, when we can't meet in person, we really need much better technology in order to provide some improvement in the technology if they hope to do this. Like the previous commenter, I don't see great urgency to proceeding, and in the face of all the other crises that we're currently involved in, getting public participation at this particular... Providing better opportunity for citizen participation and back-and-forth communication would provide much better input to the process and broader acceptance of the changes which are going to be made. So I would urge the Commissioners to consider delaying the process for a few months.
Okay, the next caller we have, the last four digits are 0466. *6 to unmute, 0466.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Janet Christensen Lewis calling in to make a comment. What is required for the comprehensive rezoning is for the public to be engaged and participate. During this time of COVID, racial equality issues, and the national election in this divided country, engagement on rezoning of Kent County is up against some stiff competition to grab the attention it deserves. For me, there are key questions that need to be answered about the why's and how's of public engagement moving forward. How can the public be most effectively engaged? What will be the rewards to the citizens for participating? What is the public's role in deliberations considered when structuring zoning? Although this public forum is billed as a conversation about how we, the public, would like to contribute our input and be kept informed, it feels as if the public has already been left out of the decision-making process. The scheduling, the explanation about the need for a consult for these decisions, why nine people, what are the criteria for the selection for these people, who does the selecting, what are the duties of the task force, can the county really afford this expenditure? There are abundant fundamental questions that are basic to the process that is so important to the future of Kent County as this rezoning process. The current technology for monitoring and participating in the county Commissioners' meeting is inadequate, and there are lapses in the actual operation of the formats being used. At a time when in-person participation is precluded, it would be imporwards, given the current pressures already burdening the constituents. I would suggest that there's no urgency, and that it is insensitive to proceed at this time with this rezoning. I would respectfully request that the Commissioners and the Department of Planning consider a postponement. It would not be a hardship to resist. Perhaps students will be returning to school, and some of the social upheaval will have settled. The future is indeed uncertain, but a delay will have no major adverse impact, and there is a good possibility that a more just process of inclusion and engagement would ensure greater public input and...
Okay, the next caller, the last four digits are 8558. 8558.
Hi, this is Myra. I'm actually on for the pickleball conversation. My connection is poor, so that's why I'm on the phone, so...
Gotcha. Thanks. 1272.
1272. You may speak now. It indicates that you...
...patient about this. My name is Elizabeth Watson. I live at 226B North Kent Street in Chestertown. And I agree with all the preceding callers. I'm speaking up tonight because I'm quite concerned that the updating of Kent County's zoning code would be an action with far-reaching consequences, and it deserves the utmost of care. Needless to mention to the public, the Commissioners get to view materials while we are left to peer at tiny screens too small to read, that the camera in the room fails to capture adequately at the right angle. When I signed in tonight to view the live video, the page that permits this does not even post the phone number and access code I needed to use to make this call into the meeting. The telephone confusion, we've just got so many major obstacles to public involvement and attention, pandemic, election, economic recession. I would respectfully urge the Commissioners to pause this process until it is possible to do this right. This is a really important action. I would like to understand the process much more, and I...
Okay, the next caller is 4576. Last four digits, 4576. Can hit *6.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
This is Miles Barnard. Message about the format of the county Commissioners' meetings right now. They really, the interface between the public and you all sitting there, it's horrible. It's really difficult. We saw navigate around to figure out which phone number I needed to dial to get in, and then, you know, I can hear some of you and not others very well. So at the very least, there has to be a different online format. But I think, well, to do this somehow in person, I think somebody earlier suggested doing it in a larger space where we can do social distancing and people can actually be present. I think that's one idea. Of course, there's, I'd like, I'd love to hear what the, what I think, absolutely, I'm all for postponing it until the public interface should be better. I mean, in last week's meeting, you guys, Commissioner Mason, said how important this process is. Mr. Mackey has said how much we want to hear from the public, how much the public needs to be involved in the process. I'd also like to comment that I don't understand, and this could simply be a lack of understanding on my part, but I don't understand why the county Commissioners are running this process as opposed to the Planning Commission. I mean, that is, that is what they do, is the committee, as opposed to actually running this process. So that's a comment, question that I have. And again, just like, just like to reiterate that I think the format has to be different, or the process has to be delayed.
The Planning Commission, so you will be the...
Tom, could you speak a little louder?
This is Tom Yeager, County Attorney. Zoning ordinances are enacted by the county Commissioners, not by the Planning Commission. So as the county Commissioners, at some point, you would be presented with an ordinance, so it would be legislation before you, and you would have the final vote. Planning Commission certainly can give input, and they will be giving input as the process continues, and they can make recommendations, and I'm sure they will. But you were the ultimate decision-makers in this process, so that's thinking and opining as to the rezoning.
And I might add that, I mean, this is probably, this first meeting of trying to get things together and laying out formats is probably the last time they'll see the three of us involved in this as a group. I set through Run, and they never heard... Then the Planning Commission did take over, along with Mr. Mackey, and he will be there this time, and the additional members that we choose to participate. And we may not ever be a part of that process until we get way into the beginning. The work is not going to be done by this board. It's going to be done by this, what this gentleman called that ad hoc group. They'll be the ones that will be, under Mr. Mackey's direction, will be doing this rezoning.
That's correct. And as we go on, there are going to get some initial comments which have been productive. I think that the technological challenges are very pertinent to what we're doing, and it's appropriate to get that information at this time, so we can have as much public input as possible under the circumstances.
And I, and I will speak to that, talking about trying to do this, was that we're going, we were getting started, getting our members in line, who was going to be actively participating, and then hoping that we could do something different in an auditorium or something, at some time when everybody feels comfortable. But listen, I have to participate in a couple other meetings that, it's just, it is a terrible way of having to do it, but this is what we're faced with. But I do hope that going forward, if we continue to move forward, and this virus continues to trend in the direction that it's going, that possibly we can have some meetings. It's tough to do it this way. I'll be the first to admit.
I would agree. And Mr. Mackey, perhaps if you could just give a, at the risk of being redundant, maybe just a brief overview of the timeline for this, because this is the, we're at the beginning of the process, so there are, and it might answer some of the questions that others who are on the line that haven't had a chance to speak yet might have.
The process is envisioned as two years, 2020 and 2021. There are five public forums similar to this one. Each one has a different topic. As we walk through the process, looking first at proposed text changes, and then a body of text, and then walking through all of the different, in 2021, walking through all the different applications for folks who would like to change their zoning. Part of the purpose of doing the text first is, it's been a long time, I understand, almost 20 years, I wasn't here for all that since it was last updated, and there may be new districts that are desired or recommended by the consultant. There may be some consolidation of this text, at least addressed and put together in some form of a package first as part of that process. So the goal has been to keep it at two years, try to bring it in in December of 2021 as an ending. I understand that part of that's in reaction to, and again, I wasn't here for that, but I know that the form, so by trying to keep, I mean, two years is still a long time, but trying to have a relatively compact, planned process with a series of events that you can look forward to hopefully keeps everyone involved who started.
And we're actually looking at a little more than a two-year period, because you're saying December 2021.
No, no.
Did I get that right? I'm off my math.
I do think it's important to know that...
Strike what I just said. Just, everybody can do the math.
Well, we have actually started before now.
Right.
So it is a two-year process.
From when we started, yeah. But there's over a year.
And to help coordinate it and work along with the zoning board and Mr. Mackey and some other individuals that the Commissioners decide to have, take part in this.
Sir, and the purpose of having a national-level consultant is they bring new ideas, and, you know, the skills and competency that staff has to, you know, hold meetings, reach out to the public, do press releases, do logistics, that's something we have in-house skills for. But someone with national experience who reviews codes every single day can add a lot of process, in the sense of bringing new skills.
So when we think about not being an urgency to it, I mean, that's a word that can go both ways, but that's really too long. It's like, things have changed in 18 years. There's things that we didn't even imagine exist process, and I think that, I think that's important.
Sorry, that's my, that's the end of the public, I have 30 minutes.
And looking at the actual language in the land use ordinance. The work sessions, the heavy lifting is going to be done with the consultant, the Planning Commission, the Ad hoc Committee. This is a public forum simply to get the feedback from the public. So it's simply an opportunity where everybody is at the table and can provide any insights or opinions that they wish.
Yes, and as we get down the line, there's going to be a draft produced, and when that occurs, that would be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would have a hearing. And then, following the Planning Commission's hearing, if the math right, we are over a year away, if the math right, we are over a year away from that stage. So this is very preliminary, introductory in nature, and it's a great opportunity to get the type of comments that we are getting tonight, because obviously, if there are technological challenges, we want to have the proposal, we want to make sure we have all the bugs taken care of, so we can get as much public participation as possible. So it's good that you're having this forum at this time to get this type of input.
Right. Hey Sally, do you have more?
Yes, I do. So the next caller, the last four digits is 9...
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, this is Joe Ichman, 10057 Perkins Hill Road, Chestertown. I'm just calling in, I was streaming it per the county's website to listen. I hadn't intended any comments off and on, and I called in to see if I could hear, and then I did hear on the phone, I heard Mr. Bernard's testimony, and then after that, I, on the phone now, I heard Mr. Mason, a bit of Mr. Fithian, never Mr. Mackey, we broke up, never else. But I don't know who's else out there, but if you tried to stream in today with my Internet, which I pay too much for for what I get, but would hear nothing. I missed the whole presentation. I did hear Mr. Bernard, and that was it, pretty much, is public comment. And when the Commissioners are in, my comment is, it's something the county's got to do better. I've been to hearings since DeSoul on the phone, video, and Queen Anne's in my work, and you can hear them, and actually, Queen Anne's has started opening up their meetings, and I just don't see why we have to be, take this process and not, not take it, considering that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we check, is the microphone in front of Mr. Mackey, is it on?
It is on. And Lacy's double-checking the live feed just to make sure that everything, maybe, Bill, if you need to speak again, maybe pull the microphone closer? I'm not sure.
If we use those headsets, would that make it clearer, and would people be able to hear it better if we, if the speakers used? I know when I've used it a couple times for some meetings that I had to attend here, I heard it much clearer over there, and the people, everything seemed to be real clear. I don't know, it made a big difference for me.
If Bill is here in person, he doesn't, the headsets won't do anything for him, but if he comes in virtually, then it would, it would feed through the headset.
But when Bill was using the headset virtually, it was crystal clear.
Correct.
I know these in and out, whereas if you have a wired mic, you're going to get a more consistent signal usually. Just a thought.
If I might add, I did speak from prepared comments, so I'm happy to post that on our website, so people can read what that was.
Okay, so the next caller we have...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Kyle Kirby. I'm an attorney at McLeod Law Group. I represent Richardson Fresh Ponds out in Millington. And I don't have any novel concepts. I agree with what everybody else has said. We're just here to monitor, the time is now for the rezoning, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
And the next one, we have 4817. 481... You hit *6 to unmute. Okay, we'll move to the next one. Last four digits are 15...
Last four digits are 15.
1562.
Again, it's star six to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yes, I'm here.
Okay, you can proceed.
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
I don't think she can hear us.
We're not muted.
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear us?
I can. I can hear you, Tom.
Okay.
Please proceed. We can hear you.
That's her. I don't think that's-
My name is Julie Boyd.
Okay.
Okay. We're out here on Bryce's Mill Road. Um, I'll try. I'll try. My name is, and we're out here on Bryce's Mill Road. And it has to, and it has, and my subject has to do with, I'll try.
You can hear her computer playing.
You need to turn off the livestream on your computer. There is a few-
I think we might consider postponing.
I think she hung up.
I think it might be a good idea to stop this and move on with our agenda. And then at the end, if people still want to come.
So the next one we have.
And just so everybody knows, feel free to put your comments in writing. So if there is anything that hasn't been mentioned, or if you're having technical difficulties, if you put your comments in writing, they can be added to the file.
Oh, um-
Julie.
No, she was 4871, wasn't it? Oh, okay, my apologies. 2143. You're the next winner, yay. 2143.
It's like when you call into a radio station, you have to turn the-
You can unmute.
Can you hear?
Okay.
Hi, this is Emily McCoy. I'm 2143, and then I live at 233 Pultexter Road. I just have a couple of comments that I'd like the commissioners to consider. The first, because such disrespects are out there and struggling with you all as a small time side comments. The, if that, if you are holding, I think we should promote for those meetings, go through social media, while as asking the newspapers, the night, who are seen to be cast with this mission, they come from a broad demographic, varying age, from parts of the county, representing interest. I'd just like to submit that for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Hang off, so we did, then we lost you. So we're on the phone now.
Okay, well, go ahead then.
Are you ready, Tom?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. Um, Julie Boyd, we live on Bryce's, the code home rule, bill number 3-2020, where articles were either amended, deleted, and also principal uses and structures are permitted with certain guidelines. So with these new articles in mind, give me an answer.
I don't understand the question.
I think what she's saying-
As if a text amendment has been changed.
Yeah, I think what her question is, we've had some recent text amendments. And what would be the fate of those in a comprehensive rezoning? And my understanding, it could stay the same. But this is not like a text amendment where you're looking at one particular section and making an amendment or a change to it. We're taking the whole document and looking at it top to bottom and coming up with a new document. And there may be some or many sections of the old document that make its way into the new document, but that's not necessarily what will happen. That could happen. So basically, everything is on the table.
Yeah, Julie, did you hear that?
I heard part of it. You're breaking up.
Okay, everything is essentially on the table. We're looking at the entire zoning ordinance. And if there's been a text amendment that has been changed, is on the table again. I mean, that's really the purpose of this. More than likely, I would say, though, if there's been a change, and I'm just going to take, oh, I don't know what, say the text amendment that changed the number of square footage back down again, but it could be addressed again in this ordinance. So everything's on the table.
Okay. So like, it was stated in the county news about an old garage in Rock Hall may be turned into a microbrewery, being added to, right?
Right.
Well, it is important, you said in Rock Hall, it's important to note that the towns, the municipalities have different land use articles or zoning ordinances, as most call them. So if it's in the town-
This is terrible.
That's not this jurisdiction.
Right, that would allow microbreweries in the Crossroads Commercial District, that would allow microbreweries in the Crossroads Commercial District in the county. And we have a map, and there are several locations in the county where you have that zoning. This would add microbreweries to the list of permitted uses in that zone. Now, there is a contrast. If the zoning is changed and that use is no longer a permitted use, as long as you have that business in continuous operation, you get to keep it. You're not required to shut down because the zoning changes. But if you discontinue that use for a period of time, you couldn't resume brewery in place and operating at the time the change is made, that microbrewery would allow to continue to remain in operation so long as it's, you know, continuous and not interrupted.
Mr. President, if I might add, all changes to the zoning code currently are tracked in the code and have a note on the date of adoption. So very recent-
Does that answer your question?
Not really. I think that Mr. Fithian needs to come over and use your microphone, Tom.
Do what?
I think that Mr. Fithian needs to come over and speak from your microphone.
Well, he hasn't spoke yet.
What? I won't answer that. Um, one other question, and maybe someone can answer this. Can residents be guaranteed if zoning is not approved for a certain area that a text-
I mean, going forward, and hopefully, this is what we're trying to do now, is to eliminate some of the text amendments to get our zoning updated. But that doesn't mean five years from now that someone could come into the Planning and Zoning Commission and request it's board. Is that right? Or we come, no, I think it just comes, it would come to us, and then we would approve it or disapprove it.
Right. What happens is if somebody has a proposal-
After a public hearing and all that.
Right.
I mean, that's the process in this thing, because things change. I mean, some things in use ordinance was done. I mean, microbreweries were something that I don't think, I mean, people didn't have microbreweries then.
Right.
And that's just, you know, one example. But no, there still would be that process where a text amendment could be done down the road, tip in her backyard or something, I don't know. And we'd have to have a text amendment to approve it.
Okay, but the final decision is up to the county commissioners, and it may not be you guys by then, but it is up to the county commissioners.
Final decision on this land use ordinance right now-
Okay, Tom. Well, those were my questions, and thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I had such a hard time getting on.
Well, that's all right. You did good there at the end.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm happy to, if you, if you-
What else do we have? No, I think we need to get, let's continue.
Okay, so the next-
You're all right.
Yeah, of course, sir. Yeah.
The next caller, last four digits are 0198. 0198. Star six to-
0198. Sally, go on to the next one, we'll come back.
Next one we have, last four digits are 0654. 0654.
The pastor of Mount Olive Abbey Church in Wharton, AKA Butler Town. I had similar issues, having trouble getting on the line, but I am glad that I am on. I'm just listening to gather information to take back to my parish that's concerned in the zoning. So I thank you for your time, and if I do have some questions, I will put-
68. 6768.
Hi, this is John Leisinger, 10948, Chesterville Road.
We can hear you.
Yes.
Great. I know the commissioners under every citizen of the county, some in many cases in very material ways. And I want to support the comments of those early in this meeting about their concerns with the schedule. I think I heard Mr. Mackey say that 2020 was to be, and that he, and that the comments were to be, with regard to the text, were to be presented by September 30, which is six weeks from now. I'm very, very concerned that there's very little public awareness of this process at this point. I know there've been some notices in the paper here since we've had a comprehensive rezoning. It'd be a mistake to rush this and not hear from all the people who might want to have a voice. And the technology that we have in front of us now is clearly inadequate for the purpose. There's a 20 deadline for comments on the text before any deliberation begins, and we make a much more concerted effort to increase public awareness of this process. Those people who are interested enough, who have called into this meeting and the previous commissioners' meetings, and that's really some of my comments.
Thank you. I mean, I would just make one little comment. I mean, if you have, if you own a property in Kent County and you got a tax bill, you should know about this process. Unless they either haven't opened a tax bill or just pulled the bill out and threw the rest of it away. But they, I mean, if you don't own a property, then maybe you don't know about it. But if you own a property, you know-
I have paid three property, recently paid my three property tax bills, and I threw out anything other than the invoice itself. I cut off the portion and sent in the money. So it wasn't obvious enough to me as a fairly educated person, you know, unless it appears in big bold letters in the newspaper and online, I'm going to guess, and multiple times, I'm going to guess most people are unaware.
Well, I don't, I mean, if I get a letter in the mail, I'm going to look at it. I might throw it away after that point, but, I mean, it was pretty obvious. I mean, it was a, anything's possible in this world.
So I got a question for Bill. Most of our meetings all follow Robert's rules. It sounds like, from a lot of the people that are calling in, they're suggesting that it sounds like they want a roundtable. How much of this discussion is going to be roundtable discussion?
Well, the, any individual time, right. Certainly, there'll be opportunities for people to give their input. We do want it to be a process where people are free to send comments all during the process. We'll be presenting those to task force and obviously copying you all's reports on the process. So people can have lots of opportunity for input.
I think if we proved anything here tonight, we've probably proven that the first few callers were correct in saying it's going to be hard to do this over the internet like this and without it being a perfect setup. And so, you know, I think we're doing some of the little bit of stuff, like putting, we haven't even put the committee together yet, the ad hoc committee. We're very, right in the very beginning of it. But as, you know, I think we're all hoping that things with this virus is going to lax a little bit and we can figure out what, there's going to have to be people in a room somewhere discussing things sometime during this.
Some point.
And there's a lot of that that's going to take place. So I think we all understand that now, and it's that we're going to do the best we can to make it happen.
Right, and with Health Department approval, I mean, the suggestion of the auditorium.
Right now, they've been adamantly opposed to introducing-
Center that we-
Right.
As we have a community service, we have a gymnasium, I mean-
There's a gymnasium out there that's about four times bigger than this room. We've got 11 people that's sitting in here tonight.
Right. I just saw Washington College, Washington College, Washington- compensate for, figure out some way to make this work. I mean, we don't have to sit here and stay exactly to what we're doing now on phones. I mean, maybe there's a way we can finagle it with the health, the approval of the Health Department. Different scenarios for these public hearings that we can change them throughout the year if the-
1562.
That was Julie.
Oh, I'm sorry. 0198. 0198.
Yes.
You hit star six. Okay, the last caller we have is 2925.
Yes, hello, this is Hannah Hen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I won't go into the technology. I wanted to point out that, you know, regardless of technology challenges and the timing, and I sent in comments earlier today about the challenge of having younger adults participate with children in virtual schools, you know, it's going to be a, a significant, to have engagement from that population will be significantly decreased, and that's of great concern to me. For me, tonight, I had to hire a babysitter because it is so difficult to hear these meetings. The audio is so bad usually for evening meetings. I can still talk tonight, and it's, that I think is a real barrier to people. But I did just want to mention, in addition to the comments I sent in, I wanted to say that I think public participation is a lot, about a lot more than hosting public meetings and that engagement is key. What I, what I'm most concerned about at this moment, other than the technology, is the fact that I haven't seen any outreach to traditionally underrepresented communities. I haven't seen any mention on being sure to be inclusive to people of color. For time, time, with social justice really at the top of mind of many people, it is concerning to me that I don't see a plan for equitable inclusion in the process, proactive reaching out to communities that may not show up to, have, and that has gone out through direct mail so far, who's sent to property owners, because I think there are many people in the county who may not currently be property owners, who have an interest in the future of zoning. And essentially, it disenfranchises people who are not existing property owners, which I think is a continuation. Encourage you to have sense of people going door to door, hand out materials about this. There are many people in the county who rent, who may be future property owners, who their jobs rely on zoning, whose children may be future property owners. And also, I would consider, urge you to consider-
Okay, so we'll give the opportunity for 0198. 0198. Do you hit star six to unmute? May I speak? The Mount Olive Pastor?
Oh, yes, that's right.
Going once. Going twice.
Okay, and appreciate it. We will take all of these things into careful consideration. I know that this, this information will also, when you all choose the task force, will be something that we'll be presenting to them. And I'd like to also encourage people who are still listening to, go ahead and send an email or a letter to us- or a letter to us, go on to C O M P, Z O N E, compzone@kentcount.org. And our phone number is 410-778-7475. And you can talk to a planner personally if you wish to convey your comments verbally. Thank you all.
Hey, thank you, and thank you to everyone that called in. Just personally, I feel this is not something, though, that we can just continue to delay forever. We're going to make the process work. Maybe what we're doing isn't the best right now. We're certainly going to try to see what we can do to improve it. And it's time that it's done. So thank you to everyone that has participated. Okay. We now have several consent items. We have the regular section to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I guess these can be consent items also, no, we can't, special class C licenses.
Mr. President, you have, yeah.
He's going to handle that.
Two before you. Both are from the, for a wedding reception on September 12 at 3:00 PM. The fire company is a bona fide organization here in the county. They have had special class C one-day licenses in the past. The applications all appear to be in order. Is there anyone on? Adam Clerk, are you aware of anybody on the line for these?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So let the record reflect that no one is here to speak for or against either of these.
Then I'm going to make a motion to approve both of those class C licenses contingent on the fact that the Health Department is good with it. Obviously, they, the Health Department has a sign off on any gathering, so I'm going to make it contingent on them getting the Health Department approval. Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, you have before you a couple of items. First is the third read of Code Home Rule Bill Number 5, 2020, Microbreweries and Class D Alcohol Roads Commercial District Section 10.2, permitted principal uses and structures by adding a new Section 21 in order to allow microbrewery as defined by the state of Maryland as a permitted use by right in the Crossroads Commercial District and by adding a new Crossroads Commercial District. You did have a public hearing on this last Tuesday in which you took comment and testimony, and you did receive one written comment in your packet after the record was left open.
So this Code Home Rule 5-2020 to amend the zoning code to permit microbreweries and Class D alcohol retail businesses in the Crossroad Commercial Zoning District. I'll second it.
Is there any other, any other discussion? If not.
Next item is the third read of Code Home Rule Bill Number 6-2020, Campground and Growth Allocation. This is an act to amend Article 5, District Regulations, Section 2, Resource Conservation District, Section 2.2, Permitted Principal Subsection 18, to address campgrounds as a separate use and to require growth allocation. And to amend Article 5, District Regulations, Section 2, Resource Conservation District, Section 2.7, Resource Conservation District Environmental Stancation in the provisions contained in the Resource Conservation District, otherwise known as RCD, as required by the Critical Area Commission related to its review of adopted CHR Bill 1-2020 at the Critical Area Commission meeting held on June 3, 2020. In essence, you had passed legislation for campgrounds that went up to the Critical Area Commission for review. They had some comments and they had some changes to it. And those were reflected in CHR 6-2020, which is before you this evening. And you did have a public hearing on this last Tuesday.
I'll make a motion to adopt Code Home Rule 6-2020 to amend the zoning code by removing campgrounds three times and adding a new subsection to address campgrounds as a separate application provisions in the Resource Conservation District. I'll second that.
Is there any, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And this would be effective on August 28 as well. Mr. President, the final item you have, the resolution to amend by interlineation the Critical Area Growth Allocation Policy for Kent County, Maryland, to address certain conditions as required by the Critical Area Commission for the Chesapeake and Atlantic Coastal Bays at its meeting on June 3, 2020. You had previously submitted a nature as far as renumbering and relettering, and that resulted in this resolution. You did have a public hearing on this last Tuesday, and there was one written comment submitted during the open comment period after the hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020 required by the Critical Area Commission for the Chesapeake and Atlantic Coastal Bays at its meeting on June 3, 2020. I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. President, now you would entertain a motion to.
So we are now down to.
Schilling and Rick Coffin.
And Rick Coffin. So are they on the line?
They're here.
Come on in and come up to the table. What we've done in the past is we have done this so that two people can come up. Are you interested in coming up and that way we can space you? And can you bring the other microphone?
Want to speak, you would need to be up here so you can be heard on the microphone.
If you like.
Here to hear you.
Yeah.
I know, muffling is, I don't wear a mask often enough to get used to the distortion that comes with it.
Okay, I don't know, proceed with.
Okay, I'm Whitney Schilling, and I have been the coordinator of the, what we now call the Wharton Pickleball Club. We would be starting our sixth year, if it weren't for the coronavirus, we would be starting our sixth year, this, another guy and myself did. And we got permission to hold demonstration days at the community center, and it grew from there. And by the end of the August demonstration days, we had 10 people and we were in line with duct tape to, at the pickleball court lines. I'm. It's a, just briefly, it's a, it's a sport like tennis, only it's played on a court the size of the badminton court. And people use paddles and wiffle balls rather than rackets and tennis balls. But it grew fast in Kent County because right now, I would say that over 400 people have played pickleball, many of them for the first time, like I did, at the community center. And I now have 85 people on my mailing list, 2019 and 2020, because I continue to keep the list, I send emails to people and ask if they still want to be on the list, so it's an accurate list. Anyway, it's grown. And somebody said that maybe you would be interested in, a couple of that group went to Florida in the winter and they came back all excited about pickleball. And we started, and it got me excited about it. We started from there, and the first time I played it, I loved it, and we went on. But it was mainly retired people that were playing, and it grew to be. And that, and essentially, and over the course of the last five years, I continued to be coordinator. I really, I really want to make the point that, that the pickleball club is the program and the community, but most of it is. As a matter of fact, the only pickleball that's being played now is, is Wharton, Rock Hall, and Round Top have pickleball courts, and we play there outside because those places are open again for safe play, like tennis.
I understand you're right.
But we usually have both, both sets, sides of the gym, and that accommodates four, so we can play four, at four courts going at one time.
Is there a discussion about, about your program? Or the time allotted for you all to be able to play? Or I think you were.
Play, I came to this commissioner's meeting and, and, and made the point that I felt that Myra and her staff were dragging their feet and not giving us enough space and time. Courts, place for retired people to play, but for adults, working people. And our schedule then was Monday and Thursday afternoon, Monday and Thursday afternoons, noon till 2. That was it for that first year. In the second year, it grew a little bit. We got one evening, unfortunately, was Monday night. Have in the 19, in the 20, 19 and 2020 season, which we're, we just did, the fiscal year ended in July, June, and started, the new year started in July. We have three perfectly fine, not terrific, but okay.
Let me again.
Three, two hour.
This is what you have now.
This is what we have.
Is what?
Three, two hour periods, noon till 2, Monday, Thursday, and Friday. It's been so long since March, I've actually forgotten myself. It's, I'm going to say Monday and Wednesday. And.
So you have a Tuesday session, what time is it?
It's 9 to 11, right, 9:30 to 11:30.
In the morning, or?
And they would be.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
What?
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay.
And what time are they?
6:45 to 8:30. And Saturday morning, nine till 12. And the Saturdays. Problem, of course, is that the, the community center's only open six months of the year for evening play. But we did have year-round on Saturdays. And if that stayed the way it is, it would serve, I don't see any reason that it wouldn't continue, even as we concluded families. I always wished for interracial pickleball, and the idea of having families there playing in some kind of league would be nice. And high schoolers, I, I wanted to get started a program. There's no program at all, it's just the gyms are given over to the students from 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock in the afternoon. My idea was that we would start pickleball in one of the gyms and see if we couldn't get some organization going to make that a more meaningful time. That might.
9:30 at night.
It's 9:00 PM.
You're done playing pickleball by 9.
We play.
Middle time, you got to be done by 9.
By 9, but they, they close, I think, at 9:30, if they have time to clean up or something. Maybe not, I don't know.
So the issue is what?
Well, that's, I'm, I have felt that, that we didn't do enough to complete the vision over, over these years, that we had of what could be. And I feel that Myra is, is not supportive and, and the current, a current issue occurred that I do want to share because it's so troubling. I have put a lot of time, I love the game, and it's my, this last five years of my retirement has been very fulfilling, as far as pickleball is concerned. But it has not been fulfilling as far as relations out there. And, and on March 5, Myra asked me and, and Rick here, and one other person, I was, I got to invite another person who were pickleball players, and the three of us met. Myra was the judge, she had two employees who were the victims. I was the guilty party, and the two people came along, probably that I got to invite may have been. The, the two employees were told to give examples of how I was unprofessional, unfriendly, and uncooperative. And one of them said that her example was that, on one occasion, when, it clerks, the coordinators and her professional staff, I didn't say, "Good morning, how are you?" I said, "We're going to need two nets today." And that was an example of my being impolite, unprofessional, and whatever. And the other person said that he couldn't think of any example, but it was my attitude, my tone, the way I approached things, that led him to conclude that I was unfriendly and disrespectful. That was the word declared at the end of this court. That she concluded that my behavior was such that I should no longer be the group's coordinator, that I should not, she would not continue to, to allow me to be the spokesperson for the.
That I think, that issue, I think that's been taken care of. I think what we want to get down to now is really your schedule. Are you satisfied with your schedule? And let's move on from there. We went, I, I, that's what, we, look, I'll tell you right up front that I'm thrilled that, that, that pickleball is, is being used by a lot of people. I was one of the commissioners that spent $10 million of the county's money to put that community center out there, and it makes me feel enough, it makes me feel a lot, it's very nice. I just want to make sure, and I think my colleagues do, that if, if you've got a problem with the scheduling or something, let's talk about it and see if, if there's something we can do to make it better. And I, and I bet you, we talked to Myra, and we'll all work it out, and we'll all walk away from here.
Well, the beginning of the year, that, that when I finished the fifth year of my coordinator for this group, that I was not going to continue in that position. But what has happened is that I got an email from one of the coordinators of the program coronavirus pandemic had died down enough that allowed them to, to schedule indoor gym practice time. And he said that since I would, I would no longer be coordinator, but that for sure, the, the program would no longer be debatable. Now, I am, I'm perfectly, perfectly aware of the need to change everybody, all the programming out there to make it conform to the needs, to meet the needs of the group. But I, I sent that email to everybody, this schedule, that all of a sudden that could, could be taken away. I got, Myra read that email, and she replied to me that she apologized for the wording that.
The employee.
The employee used, those were her words. They, they were, "We absolutely will not put up with the same behaviors from the past and will not debate program, schedule, times, fees, and so forth." Myra went on to say in her letter to me that as far as she was concerned, that Kiran would be communicating.
I think what you're trying to talk about has been handled in-house. What we want to do is get back to the pickleball.
Okay.
Find out what your schedule is, if that's a schedule that's satisfactory to everybody, and then if it's, if it's, if it's satisfactory.
Can, may I come into the conversation, please?
Is that Myra?
Let me first, Myra, if you could, do, do you have a copy of, obviously you do. Let me first, Myra, if you could, do you have a copy of, obviously you do, the schedule that they, I tried to write it down, I was, I missed.
And if I can speak directly to the communication that was sent to Witt.
Well, let's, Myra, why don't we just forget that? Because.
Well, it speaks about the, it speaks about the scheduling.
Let's, let's talk about the scheduling.
Correct, that's exactly what I'd like to do as well. Basically, the, in that we couldn't guarantee, basically, that the exact schedule that's currently in place was going to be the same schedule when we reopen the building, which that hasn't been determined. A change to the schedule has not been determined, and it was not communicated that, how different is yet to be determined, because it hasn't been determined. Just recently, the school put forth what was going to be their final remote learning plan for the upcoming school year. As a result of that, we have remote learning settings. Additionally, I've had homeschool groups who have inquired about use of the community center to help supplement their learning experience as well. As a result of that, considering there would be certainly limited building, some changes, but what those changes would be had not yet been determined. And the one thing that I'll add, which wasn't, you know, communicated to the pickleball group, is that whatever the scheduling ends up being for reopening, that's a schedule that would absolutely be from the previous season's schedule. And it was not communicated that your time is being taken away.
I understand that.
So when does the new scheduling start typically, if it wasn't a COVID year? Would it start, would it start when school typically started? Asking when the programming is, but don't you normally change the way things work at Parks and Rec, like when school starts, you go into something different?
Well, there are later hours, is that what you're talking about, and therefore?
Then the fall schedule picks up, isn't it typically around September 1st?
So, Myra, when do you?
Specific to the pickleball schedule, that runs over the course of a full year, and it's not a seasonal program.
So your summer schedule ends October 1st?
No.
Or do you have high school kids come over after school, starting September? Typically without, if it wasn't a COVID year.
I'm sorry, Bob, if you can.
Over after school from the three to five, for the three to five session?
The first day of school.
Right.
And I think that's what answers.
Right, that was what I was saying. That's typically when your summer schedule ends and your fall schedule starts, when school starts, that's when everything changes into a different schedule.
Goes into effect.
Okay, so when are, when are you going to present us with the changes, starting in September, I guess? Is that a fair question?
Well, I think what.
Right now, we're closed, but.
Right, it's, we just found out what's happening with the schools, and that dictate, that will dictate a lot of the programming.
And the intent, the intent is to, it wasn't the intent to present the schedule to the Board of County Commissioners, but it was the intent to present it to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
And that, yeah, that, it would go to the Parks and Rec advisory to see the changes that's made in the schedule, and the three of us get a chance to look at it, because the advisory board doesn't get the complaints, the three commissioners do.
And especially in a year with coronavirus, it's going to look very different, so I think it would be very, I mean, I think that's a wonderful.
Intervene, Rick, what's your?
Oh, yeah, my name is Rick Coffin, I'm.
Interaction here.
Yeah, no, I just had a question, I'm a Rock Hall resident, by the way. When you mentioned.
Pickleball player, I'm sorry.
And a pickleball player, too. I'm not, know how good I am, but I get out there and whack away at it, but.
To tell any organization like the pickleball group who their representative is.
Okay, so he could continue if he chooses, okay.
As far as I'm concerned, I mean, it's not, it's not the county's position to be dictating who's going to be in charge of what. We're the county, we work for the people, want it to be a fun place, but the county, it's not the county's business to pick the spokesperson for the pickleball group. You pick whoever you want.
Now, Ronnie, Ronnie, when it comes into play, when employees don't feel as though they're being treated with respect and contact person, then I think, you know, that there has to be some consideration as to changes with that. It wasn't just a, oh, we want a new contact person. There were some significant challenges that have taken place over the last few years that led up to the march read upon by everyone in attendance, myself, Mr. Coffin, Mr. Schilling, Mr. Clark, two Parks and Rec employees, that there would be a change in contact person, along with Mr. Schilling expressing that it is his intention to step down in late May into June as the contact person, and that someone else from the group would be the new representative for the group. I felt it's important, and I understand what you're saying, Ronnie, and I certainly agree with you, you know, it shouldn't be, we just dictate who is going to represent the group. But when there are challenges that makes it difficult for the staff because it seems not being communicated correctly to the group, that creates a wealth of problems and issues that have been unfortunate, unfortunately, and that was the whole, there were reasons behind the feeling of a level of disrespect, bullying, um.
Well, listen, I don't, I really don't know that there's but two things we need to do. We need to give them a schedule and let them adhere to the schedule.
Right.
And they know when to show up.
I don't disagree with you on that.
And that's all we gotta do.
Yeah, it sounds to me like there's, in, use of a better word, some personality, maybe conflicts here in the schedule, and it really doesn't need to be any contact, in a way. I mean, if the pickleball players are coming in at.
From 12 to 2, they should show up at 12 to 2.
And they're going to have two nets there, well, hopefully, there's two nets there because everyone's there, or asking interaction at all, the way I would see it. Unless somebody's going looking for trouble.
If I could just interject a couple of things. One, personally, I'm happy with the hours. My conversation with Myra was that, because like restaurants, you can't sit at every table, you have to be spread out, so there might be some adjustments to procedure, there might be some adjustments to how many people can come in, whatever, but those would be temporary, whatever they might be, and then once the virus or vaccine is communication, maybe just email that Parks and Rec, and I suggested, or Myra and I talked about this, they could create their own list, any contact or whatever goes out, so there's open communication for everybody, so that will prevent problems of that nature. And I think worthwhile. I was at the meeting March 5th, and I didn't say anything, and Witt had said he wanted to step down, or he didn't mind stepping down, and everybody was fine with that. In reality, no one is really willing to step up and take over the role. I don't think a big role is needed if Parks and Rec is going to order balls. Well, what kind of balls? And you have someone that you can call up rather than sending out an email, and you get eight different suggestions, and seven people are unhappy, you didn't pick their, so you need a go-to person. I don't think it needs to be a big role, but I think there might be cases where you need to just talk to some.
Choices.
New balls.
I mean, basketballs, there's a zillion brands, Wilson, Spalding.
Well, I would think that would be very simple, if they've got X balls the time before, you get X, and they were satisfactory, you order X balls again.
Yeah, well, that was the root of the problem, they got different balls, and the one we were using was discontinued, you know, as they break.
Who buys the balls?
Parks and Rec.
Well, actually, for the first five years of our, not the first five, but the first four, we did, we took up a collection among the pickleball club.
I don't worry about the first four years, I'm worried about today.
So Parks and Rec, my understanding is Parks and Rec will buy them.
So.
Which is fine, that's, I'm happy with that.
I don't understand why the balls should even be an issue.
Well, that was the whole meeting was about, because there was some miscommunication of, I mean, on March 5th, that Parks and Rec wasn't going to buy the balls, and so there was a equipment, that's the crux of the meeting, and that was resolved. As I said, Myra said, "Well, we will buy balls, I just don't want to throw the balls away, the old," there was a new type of ball that was gotten that was breaking and wasn't that great, so we were going to go to a new kind, and Myra said, "Well, whatever you recommend," we'll find, saying that Witt has to resign as the coordinator, and that led to some hard feelings and, to me, some disrespectful comments, and was further exaggerated by the email, so.
So are we?
We're getting into a personnel issue.
Yeah.
I mean, going forward, I'm happy with the program, and it's to let someone else do it, if somebody's willing to step up, I'm fine with that, too.
When, what's a prospective date, Myra, that we would have a schedule straight, so we could all take a look at it?
The goal would be by September, by Labor Day.
I don't know what else we should, I don't know what else we should be talking about until we get a chance to take a look at the schedule, let Myra have an opportunity to put it together, and then we'll all take a look at it, and we'll see what we like about it, what we don't like about it. Hopefully, we'll like it, and we'll.
Changes because of the scars, and that's.
The way, the direction we're going, hopefully, things are going to get a little better as we go, at least, we're hoping for that, we all got our fingers crossed, but.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what else we're going to achieve here tonight, but I think maybe we all need to just step back, relax a little bit, and, and I'm, here, I'm not putting any blame anywhere, think before we speak. And hopefully, everybody that wants to play pickleball will have fun playing pickleball, and you're not knowing, well, someone's not going to run like this, or I don't like that, and, I mean, life's too short for all that, particularly when you get to my age and Mr. Schilling's age, life's too short to have these arguments about something like that, or it is to me.
There's going to be disagreements about line calls, was it in or out? So that's, that's, that's the nature, that's the nature of sports.
I hope you're not taking, I don't know anything about pickleball.
Generally speaking.
But you're not going to take the racket and hit the line man over the head, I hope. I mean, it's not that important.
We get along very well, most, we get along very well most of the time, and I acknowledge that. I am concerned mainly about the future, the relationship between our program and the community center's willingness to host it and to.
Opportunity, the advisory board to take a look at it, and we're going to take a look at it, and hopefully, we'll all be happy.
I, okay, that's fine with me. I guess one thing I would say in defense of the need to take time with the schedule is that as long as the center is closed, that the schedule will, of course, have to be adjusted. You can't have, as long as social distancing is important, we often have 20 people in the gym, and people are sitting next to each other on benches, that kind of thing, when they're not playing. All those things will have to be taken into consideration.
Wearing masks. Wearing a mask when you're hitting that thing, whatever, a ball or whatever it is, I don't know anything about pickleball.
Like a wiffle ball, so old, slow people like me can get it, instead of.
So you're all going at it at one time?
What?
Do you all go after it at one time?
Well, there's only two on the side, so only two of you, but.
So it's two people hitting the tennis, I mean, it's two players playing against each other.
A smaller court and a slower ball.
Okay.
So I can get to it. Well, I thank you for your interest in pickleball and giving us the opportunity to speak, and I'm, I'm, I think we've got, hopefully, got a good plan working forward and looking.
We can proceed, and everyone can have fun. I mean, that's, that's the goal, I think, isn't it, to have fun?
Absolutely.
And if your thing's beating the ball back and forth, great.
You must be having fun because your group has grown.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Since the group started, and it's just grown and grown, and it's just, it's a fun sport to play, it's a social sport, you know, and it's, you know, you know, fastest growing sport, I think, in the country, so it's gone from nothing in five years to this large group, a lot to what.
She talks about how great it is, and how good she is, and.
I have to get you guys out there, too. That would be just a lot.
Bob is up to it right away.
Late at night.
He's an example of someone who's standing outside in the hallway looking in, and I came out in the hallway, and the sport is this.
Sounds like I'm not going to go out there and stay in the hallway.
I'll come out and drag you in.
Yeah, you're probably going to drag me off, too.
People who can't play tennis anymore, is what it is.
Exactly, my situation, exactly.
Okay, we're now on to the coronavirus, coronavirus is really fun, I think we have, well, we have the fund here, which I don't think we have to go over it.
No, that's just for your informational purposes, and.
We have Rosemary, is she here? There she is.
How are you?
We're fine.
Excellent. Tonight, I just have a brief item. We are requesting your approval of our contract. We awarded the Feeding Initiative to Community Mediation.
That's what we, we.
So to be clear. Right, you already approved the concept, so what's before you tonight is the actual contract.
There was two, wasn't it? One of them with Kent Center.
There's the Kent Center and.
What's it called?
Community Mediation Upper Shore.
You mentioned the Chesterstown Legion, is that what you mentioned?
Yes, there, that's where they're operating out of currently.
Are you using the kitchen out there now? Okay.
They use the kitchen for storage, and sometimes, like, when the food bank.
They're already using it, they had the blood, blood banks.
They have been there.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, so we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to, motion to sign the contract for implementation of the Feeding the Elderly Initiative with Community Mediation.
Have a good evening.
Okay, we're now on to Wayne Darrell.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
I have before you this evening two agreements, both of them with Motorola, that relate to our public safety radio system, the amount of $26,488.38 in the first one, and the second one, also with Motorola for the public safety radio system, is the annual software agreement, software upgrade agreement, an amount of $31,788.15, and again, requesting approval of the agreement.
A fourth second, 21.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you. Okay, next we have Jamie Williams.
Jana, we can't hear you.
We can see Jana, but can't hear Jana.
On mute.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Yes, Ms. Rising.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm here tonight to request your signature on a proclamation to proclaim Saturday, September as International Underground Vailment Month for the state.
And we would just be basically following his lead, making it official in Kent County as well.
Correct, correct. And I'll just share with you a little bit of importance about that, Bill, it's Grantham Forest Farm in Chesterfield.
Where was it? Where was it?
Grantham Forest Farm on Chesterfield Road.
Granville. Say the name of the farm again.
Name of the farm?
Grantham Forest Farm.
Granville Forest.
Site, and we actually have the decal in our office. There's another site, the Kent Cultural Alliance, John Schlatwiser will be submitting an application in January to be recognized as a Network of Freedom site, and this recognition comes from the National Park Service.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now down to Maury Hill.
This.
New York City in a.
It's my city pad.
Is that? Is that Ocean City or are you in Ocean City?
Where, where are you?
It's a background superimposed.
It's a background applied, but I use it because it reminds me of my office when I worked for the railroad. Determine whether or not a vacant MEO one or MEO two position in the Public Works Department Roads Division is to be filled at this point or left vacant for, uh, a foreseeable time in the future. The vacancy is due to the resignation of a current employee. Uh, of course, as you'll recall, you determine either a motion to approve the advertising of the MEO one or MEO two position in the Public Works Department Roads Division or a motion to postpone the hiring process to fill that position, um, until a future date.
Question for you, Marty. Uh, I understand and I think Tom, you mentioned.
Retirement coming up in November and one in January.
Yeah. We certainly, I, I guess what my argument, well, we can't lose all three of them. I mean, we can't cut the, if we, if we, if we drop a position, I don't, we can't drop three of them.
Can't drop three of them, but I think the question is, do we need to?
It likely will be filled internally, uh, and then, you know, the trickle down effect will, um, um, start into play. So I, I do think it's pertinent that you either fill this one or the next one and this is probably the one to fill due to the fact that the November filling is likely to not actually occur until when we get it, but we'll have someone in the pipeline.
We'll hire this one and maybe drop the next one.
Yeah, but you gotta have, you gotta train them, it takes two months to hire them, fingerprint them.
But with this, you're gonna hot, you're gonna advertise for a MEO one and.
License if in fact they don't have it. If someone has the experience in the CDL license, then we would actually, if we were making the offer to them, we would offer them the MEO two position.
Gotcha.
So, but we let the applicant pool determine whether we're going to hire the one or the two based upon the qualifications of those who apply.
So January.
That would be internal and it would probably trickle down until.
We'd be down two.
Well, if we don't fill this, we'll be down three, but yeah, I think we should probably think about filling this one and we'll talk about the other two as they come up. That would suit me, too.
Well, I, I kinda think we ought to buy some time.
Well.
Well, just, so if you were to advertise tomorrow, how long would it take to actually hire somebody? What's the timeframe?
Uh, well, this vacancy has been there, so the whole, it's, it's 10 weeks, but from this point forward, roughly eight weeks.
So you're talking eight weeks before they.
Well, we'll advertise or.
I don't, honestly, I don't care. We, we know we probably, I think it's a good idea to drop one.
Right.
But I, so if you could do it now and hire the next two or do, or hire this one and drop another one, I don't care. We wait a month and it's gonna be three months before they come in.
Do they work in pairs of two?
Like it would be awkward to be down one, but it wouldn't be as awkward to be down two.
Well, if we hire someone now, we wouldn't be down the other one until November. If we advertised in November, that person would likely start in January and January, at some point in January, the last employee, the next employee is leaving. So at that point, even though it would be filled internally, yes, and then the snowstorms and different weather events, you still are left with one individual that doesn't have a partner. Um, I'm sure the, the department could manage that better than being down two.
Well, some of.
Because that's a whole crew off the road.
Some of the jobs, I mean, they do by theirself, like the mowing stuff, there's only one.
Sure.
I think we're all three on the same page and we're gonna try to scale down maybe one employee because of the financial situation, it's whether we do it now or later. Yeah, and I, I'm.
You two are fine.
Okay, now, I mean, I don't, staggered a month, but I don't think we should stagger more than a month.
I, I guess, I mean, I'm gonna vote.
And if you want to do that, I'm fine with it, too.
This is a slower time, I think. Still, if we, if we did this in October, um, we're still would have them on board, uh, before, hopefully, if we had a big snowstorm. Or Thanksgiving Eve and we had more snow between then and January the first than we'd had for years. I can remember that because I was planting rye on Thanksgiving Eve and didn't have any lights on my tractor and the only way I could tell where I was going was because the ground was.
Yes.
But we built into the budget, so we were aware of the retirements coming, impending retirements this, in this fiscal year, so we actually calculated their payouts and built it into the budget.
Wait, you're the boss, I don't care, I can be waiting either.
Motion, I'm gonna vote the way I hope. We deal with this one before November, we could deal with it in October.
Make a motion to ad, start advertising October first.
Would you like me to begin advertising like the first week of October?
You could approve something now to, to do later.
And another option is, so we're going to be bringing these in front of you one at a time through a transition when people leave. So it's possible that Marty starts a collection, a list, and maybe once every, I don't know, two months or at some specified time, we put it in front of you and you make a determination about whether or not, you know, it's putting undue hardship on the, the department and/or if the budgetary forecast looks better than what we're anticipating, maybe you just move forward with all of them. There's a lot of different ways that this could be done.
Make a motion that we postpone this one and we'll deal with November's.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
No. Now, if you vote against this, I'm gonna throw this water bottle over.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, very good. And the vote was made, correct?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen, have a nice evening.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're now ready for, uh, I guess Marty out or, or, um.
Public Works, Mike Works.
Marty Holden will be.
Here requesting approval to schedule and advertise a public hearing notice for the required text amendment to the Kent County Solid Waste Recycling Management Plan. Back in 2019, the Maryland General Assembly passed Senate Bill 370 titled Environment, Recycling Office Buildings. It requires that by October 1st, 2021, each owner of an office building must provide bins for containers for the collection of recyclable materials and for the removal for further recycling. The office building owners, tenants, out there, office buildings. The office building owner or tenants must ensure collection and transportation of recyclable materials to markets or other legal recycling destinations such as their Kent County drop off centers. Office building owners, tenants, and I would add that they could also recycle glass and other items that would be appropriate for their location. The schedule for the office building recycling program is, is as follows. Kent County is required to amend the Solid Waste Recycling Management Plan by October 1st, 2020. So currently Kent County has no properties, office buildings, that fall within the guidelines. This includes.
My first question was gonna be.
I should have started with that, right?
Burped right out of my mouth, Marty.
And, and Tom's as well. We were getting ready to ask you, where in the world we got a building that big?
That records. Um, but obviously if a new constructed renovated office building, uh, that meets the annotated code is constructed, um, they shall, they'll begin participating in the program within three months or being notified by Kent County agent or in this public hearing and I think it's tentatively scheduled for September the 8th.
Well, this, this is a text amendment?
It is to the Solid Waste Management Recycling Plan.
Well, if we don't have, and now, we don't have any buildings with 150,000 square feet.
That is correct.
So why can't this be addressed in our rezoning without going through a.
It's not a, it's not a zoning issue, it's for your, your waste plan. It's different code, it's a different part of your code, it's not the zoning code.
Yeah.
Okay, stupid if we don't have it, but.
But if somebody ever builds one that big, we'll be ready for it.
We'll be ready.
This is your spaceship in your backyard, Commissioner Mason.
But now, wait a minute, if we don't.
It's like putting that spaceship in your backyard you were talking about earlier.
But if, but if we don't get our rezoning done properly.
But probably it would be far exceed that.
I mean, 150, what, what would be, what kind of building would that be?
It's 3.5 acres about.
Well, that, hmm, that sounds like a data center.
Yeah.
Data center. Second.
Is there any other discussion?
We gotta get, I'm sorry, we gotta get Tom home.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
We haven't voted yet.
He's going, he's had enough.
Please wrap this up, Marty needs to go play pickleball.
Do what?
He's going to play pickleball.
Thank you.
Terry?
Okay, I'm actually here, that's a report out item, but before I tell you about that, I would like to make one announcement and that is that a census now ranks tied for ninth nationally for self-response rate. So this, this is very good. We're having a lot of people return those census surveys timely and, and we're ahead of the curve. Uh, three out of our five municipalities have surpassed the 2010 rate. Um, and in Kent County, our 2010 self-response rate was 57.7% and we're currently at 58.5%. So this is very, very positive and I'd just like to encourage all of those that stuck it out through this meeting and are still listening, if you haven't filled out your census, please do so. Reasons, one of which is vaccinations, which is at the top of all of our lists of important things right now because almost every single thing on this agenda had to do in some way, shape or form with coronavirus and until a vaccination is out there, if we only have 58%, 58.5% of our population fill out.
They're, they're thinking we only have 12,000 people and that's all they're going to send us.
So we've still got a long way to go, but the, the good news is we're, we're doing good so far. So we're doing better than in 2010.
Okay, so if you are listening and you haven't filled out your.
Their good example of census information is that Coronavirus Relief Fund was based on your census number, how many people live here in Kent County. So again, if, if we were to have another, um, major incident and only 60% of our populations filled out that survey, we're only gonna get it over and over and over again. And again, I just cannot emphasize how important it is, so I just encourage everybody to fill out their census for anybody that's listening. Um, and the item that I have for you on the agenda is we did have one liquor license establishment that had a violation and a warning was issued per the letter that is in your packet. Wanted to say anything, she's the only caller.
Okay.
So if.
Listening earlier, but.
Yeah, but if she wants to make a comment, she's.
Well, if you wanted to call her, her number.
So the, um, caller with 0654, if you would like to say anything, now is your opportunity.
Well, she commented before and, and that's.
She was just listening.
Certainly appreciate her for a motion for adjournment.
Second.
For a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. How come, how come Bob beat you two that every time?
Not the last two weeks. Last two weeks. Enough of this crazy.
Or on pickleball?
Or on pickleball?